Okay, hi to everybody who's joining. So we're gonna get started here in just a second. So because of the way our livestream works for YouTube, if I could ask everybody who's not a trustee to go ahead and mute and turn off their video for the moment. We'll just have the trustees up and then when we bring each person up for their comment or their report or whatever that it is, then go ahead and turn your video and your audio back on. And that way we'll just see the people who are talking. All right, I think we've got everybody. It looks like we're up on YouTube. We're recording. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call us to order at 5:02 PM. Thanks, everybody for being here. We'll start with a roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Kapal.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
Perfect, and I am here as well. So hi, everybody. Thanks so much for being here. As you guys know, tonight's meeting is gonna work a little bit differently than our normal meetings. So we've got sort of a fun meeting within a meeting structure. We're gonna start like we do for our regular board meetings. And then we'll open the public hearing within that. So it's sort of like a set of parentheses. So we have a couple of pieces of business to get through on our regular agenda. So we're gonna go ahead and do those and then we'll move into the public hearing piece. So the first thing we're gonna do is approve and adopt the agenda. So if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Okay, perfect. Move to second. Any discussion on that or questions or anything anybody wants to move around or reorder? Okay, hearing them, we'll take a vote. As always, we're gonna do a roll call vote just because it's our socially distanced protocol. So trustee Andrews. Uh oh, it looks like you froze for a second, Terry. There we go. Okay, let's try that again.
Yeah, I um. I didn't hear what you said, Katie, sorry.
Okay, we'll try one more time. So we've got a motion and a second to approve and adapt the agenda as it stands in the package. So if I could get a vote from each trustee on that motion. Trustee Andrews.
I'm gonna yeah.
Okay, we'll pause for a second. We'll just give it a minute here. Well, I'm gonna call the rest of you guys and we'll get Terry back in a minute. So trustee Kapal.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Yes.
Okay, and that's an I vote from me. And we'll give Terry just a second. He may jump out and jump back in. We've got a quorum either way, so it's not critical.
Wait a minute, you were gonna go on without me, it sounds like.
I, you know, listen, time and tide and Zoom procedures wait for no man. No, no, no.
Okay, I've been having internet difficulties in my house. So I went to another room and here I am. Can you hear me okay now, Katie?
Yeah, 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 you sound great. Good. Perfect. So just your vote on approving and adapting the agenda.
I vote aye.
Perfect. All right, so the agenda is adopted as it stands in your board package. I have at this time no public comment on non-agenda items. I have a great number of public comments on agendized items, which we will get to shortly. And it looks like we've got our support group reports next. I think we are still waiting for Bridgette and Marnie. So if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to just put a pause on those and we'll come back to them as soon as they, as soon as they join. If that's all right with everybody. Cool, okay. All right, so we'll come back to those in a minute. Okay, so that brings us to item four, which is the beginning of our public hearing. So before we jump in, I wanna just talk a little bit about how this is gonna work because it is slightly different. So for our public hearing, what we've done is we've moved all of our regular business that we would normally handle in our regular meeting, which this is, to special meeting, which we had last week. So we did all of our departmental reports and our votes on things. So all that's kind of been handled. So tonight is really just about making sure that we have the time and space to hear from everybody on some of the big questions that we're looking at. So we've announced a specific time and place for our consolidated public hearing, which is tonight. And that is related to the formation of the Altadena Library District Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Facilities and Services for CFD and incurring a bonded indebtedness for the CFD. Okay, so there's gonna be a lot of legalese that we're gonna hear at various points. I just wanna talk about like what it is to give a little bit of context. So what we're gonna talk about tonight is what's called a CFD, so a Community Facilities District. And what that basically is, is an entity that can take on public debt. So it is something that sits right over top the Altadena Library District. And it would allow us to issue bonds and incur public indebtedness in order to solve some of our facilities and services needs. So that, when you hear CFD, it basically is synonymous with the district. But it is, it's a term that you'll hear tossed around. So we're gonna hear from a number of different folks tonight. Some of our consultants, who are gonna talk about how that CFD would work and some public opinion research and outreach that we've done around it. And then we're gonna hear from folks who have joined us tonight to lend us their thoughts, which we very, very much appreciate. So we will get to that hopefully by about 5:30. We'll get to the part where we're into public comment. But we do have a couple of things to do before that. So in considering solutions to some of our facilities and services needs, we've been in the process of what we've basically called a feasibility phase for a couple of months now. And what we've been doing is looking at how feasible a potential future ballot measure would be as a solution to some of those problems. So as you guys know, we have very real facilities needs that you'll hear more about that have been the subject of our architectural surveys. And we have our Measure A funding, also known as the parcel tax, which comprises about a third of our budget and that expires in 2024. So we're looking at ways to address, you know, multiple challenges. And I also wanna emphasize that, again, tonight is really about listening and about hearing feedback from the community. And we're not making any decisions. So you'll see that there are, with the exception of a resolution we have to pass that's like a little bit of a structural thing, there's no decision making tonight. So what's gonna happen is we'll hear all the information that's gonna come to us this evening. And then we're gonna have a special meeting a week from today. So on Monday, August 3rd, and that'll be at 5:00 PM. So same time, same place, a week from today, same deal. It'll be, you know, virtual. And that's the point at which we'll actually make a decision on how and when to move forward on some of these, some of these items. So no decisions made tonight. We're here to just hear from you guys and hear your thoughts and take it all in. And you know, I think it's important to emphasize too that these are, these are big questions and they're serious ones. And this is also a really challenging time, right? I don't have to tell any of you that this is a uniquely difficult moment for lots and lots of people in our community and throughout, you know, LA County and our region. And so we're looking seriously at all of the ramifications of the choices that are before us. And I just wanna emphasize to everybody that this is a process we're taking really seriously. We're doing all the research and outreach and homework that we possibly can because we know that this is, this is a big one and it's a tough time. And we wanna be as thoughtful and intentional as we can going forward. So thinking a little bit more broadly about what we are doing tonight, we're gonna hear from Sarah Mars at NBS. And she's gonna talk a little bit about the, what's called the rate and method of apportionment. And what that is, is basically the way in which all this would work. So the sort of nuts and bolts of the process. And then we're gonna hear from Laura Crowdie, who's from Clifford Moss, which is a political consulting and strategy firm. And they've been working with us on some of our public opinion and outreach. And she's gonna talk about what that research has shown, what we've learned over the past couple of months, and what we've, what we've heard back from the community. So all that being said, I'm gonna now officially open the public hearing to receive testimony and comments from the public. If there is no majority protest tonight, and if the board wishes, then we will have the option to submit a proposed special tax to the voters in November. So again, that decision will be made next week on Monday, August 3rd, at a special meeting. So at this time, I'd like to ask Sarah from NBS to come on with us and give us a little bit of background for what we're gonna hear tonight.
Thank you, trustee Clark, and good evening, members of the board and staff and members of the public. I do have a presentation that I submitted. If that's available to be shown.
Yeah, can we put that up on the screen, guys? Or Sarah, did you wanna do that or do you want us to do it on our end?
Um, either way, actually, is fine.
We opened it up so you can share your screen, Sarah.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I think in the past we've, oh, nope, there it is. Okay, here, I've got it on my end and I will share.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay, are you all seeing my presentation? Okay, great. Sorry, give me one second. I have to make it so I can also advance the slides at the same time. There we go. Okay, are you still seeing the presentation or are you now seeing the PowerPoint?
We see PowerPoint.
Okay, hold on.
There you go.
All right, perfect. Okay, so sorry about that. The first thing we'll talk about is the CFD report. And this is part of the agenda package this evening. And what this is, is a report that describes the facilities and services to be financed and funded and provides a cost estimate, provides a copy of the boundary of the CFD, and it includes a copy of the rate and method of apportionment, which, as trustee Clark mentioned, is the document that describes how the special tax works. So in terms of facilities and services, this is what is authorized. The Architectural Resources Group had done some analyses of the condition of the library districts, two buildings, the main library and the Bob Lucas branch. And they made some recommendations as to what types of improvements needed to be made to those facilities and also provided a cost estimate. So those documents were the basis of a lot of the work we've done in terms of outlining what facilities would be improved, what improvements would be made and what the costs are. And so again, it really comes down to the improvements in services in both the main library as well as the Bob Lucas branch. And the improvements address usability issues, some accessibility issues, and generally provide some updates to some facilities, which I'm sure you all know are older facilities. It also provides for the, some operation and maintenance funding. So in addition to providing capacity to issue bonds to finance some of the facilities improvements, the CFD would allow for collection of funding for operation and maintenance of the library. And it also includes an allowance for incidental expenses. A Community Facilities District is a financing mechanism that is built on the property tax rolls each year. And as such, there are requirements to submit the levy to the county for inclusion on the tax rule, the county charges for that. And with the issuance of bonds, there are certain things that need to be done, including continuing bond disclosure and so forth. So there is an administrative cost of the CFD itself, and that's what's included here. So in terms of the cost estimate on the facility side, the estimate for the facilities for the main library is just over twenty and a half million dollars in terms of the actual construction cost. The Bob Lucas Branch Library sits at just under two million or 1.97 million dollars in terms of total facility spending. On the services side, we're looking at an annual cost of 1,135,000 dollars. And then in terms of incidental costs, which includes some bond costs, that total, one-time bond costs, that total comes to 212,000 dollars. The annual cost is actually closer to 25,000 on the administration. And I didn't break that out, but the total cost is approximately 25,000 dollars for all of the administrative costs. And then we do have some bond costs incorporated as well. This is a copy of the CFD boundary. It is coterminous with the boundary of the Altadena Library District. The rate and method of apportionment is a multi-page document that describes how the special tax works. And we've broken out here kind of the main components here. The first being that we are levying only developed property. So undeveloped property is not taxed. The rate for single-family residential property is 10 cents per building square foot. The rate for an apartment unit is 115 dollars and 24 cents. And then commercial is taxed on a per parcel basis. If it's less than a 10,000 square foot commercial parcel or 10,000 buildings square feet, it is 340 dollars and 92 cents. A larger commercial parcel would be taxed at 460.97. And we are providing for a low-income exemption that applicants could choose to submit an application along with backup documentation and be exempted from the special tax. So that's the gist of the multi-page document that goes into, you know, some more detail. Includes lots of definitions of property types and that sort of thing. Describes how the taxes levied on the property tax roll and some other details. But this is the gist of how the special tax is working. And in terms of next steps, the, as trustee Clark mentioned, the board will consider the resolutions related to the formation of the CFD, bond issuance and the election on August 3rd. Should those resolutions be approved, that would move us to Election Day on November 3rd. And just to get a sense of, should the measure be approved, November, December timeframe is when the board would consider an ordinance levying the special tax. It would be levied on the property tax rules, as I've mentioned. And then the special tax notice is recorded. Roughly winter of 2021, the construction projects would be bid and we would begin preparation of the bond offering documents. Moving into spring of 21, we would see the bond sale and bond proceeds available for construction projects. In summer of 21, the special tax levy would be submitted to the county for the 2021-22 property tax bill. And in November, on November 1st of 21 is when the first installment of that first property tax bill with this special tax would become due. The second installment would become due in February of 2022. So that's generally when you would need to, folks would need to pay those bills would be that November 21 and February 22 timeframe. And with that, I will take any questions about the CFD report or the rate and method of apportionment.
Okay, perfect. So in keeping with the way the Brown Act requires us to do stuff, I will open the floor to trustees. If you guys have any questions for Sarah about any of the mechanisms she's talked about, the floor is yours.
I have a question, Katie. And that would be, at the very beginning, Sarah, your slide indicated that the annual cost of those incidental fees would be 212,000 dollars. But then you talked about sort of a stream of payments at 25,000 dollars annually. So I wanted to find out if, if that, if I got that confused. Is, are we paying 212,000 dollars a year for that incidental cost or is only 212 initially and then 25,000 after that?
It's roughly, it's, the bond cost will be determined at the time of bond issuance specifically. But the 212,000 dollars is not the annual cost. It's roughly 25,000 dollars on the annual cost of administration, which includes the county collection fee, cost to prepare arbitrage rebate related to the bonds, continuing disclosure related to the bonds and that sort of thing. The 212,000 dollars includes some of those bond issuance costs that would be a one-time cost at the time of bond issuance.
Okay, and so maybe I misread that. And so 212 is the total amount then for incidentals, is that right?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay, great. I just, I saw the, I saw the annually on it and I would just wanna.
Yeah, it said annual and it should have, that, that should have been more clear. It's 25,000 dollars annually and, but an estimated total of, of the 212.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Other questions from the board?
I have two, Katie. I guess, I can start with one and then see what other folks might have. So Sarah, on the, on the costs, as far as what we are considering and the work that you guys did, the 10 cents per square foot and then the other costs, those, that includes the cost of everything that we're talking about, correct?
It does. The 10 cents per square foot and then the other rates per parcel and per unit would encapsulate both the debt service on any bonds issued for those facilities, the cost of the services component, as well as the, the incidental costs.
Okay. And then the second question is the, the total dollar amount for the facilities issues at the main branch, which is the just over 20 million. I know like that was kind of the total for every possibility that ARG had done. Would we be required to, A, bond all of that amount? And B, would we be required to issue bond it all at the same time?
And the answer to both of those questions is no. You are setting, with the resolutions that you'll be considering at the next meeting, you would be setting a maximum bond authorization. You do not need to issue all of those bonds. You can issue only a portion of those bonds if you prioritize certain projects. And then when we get to the part where we're calculating the annual special tax, the debt service amount that goes into the annual special tax calculation would only be based on those bonds that you have issued. So you would, people would be levied a prorated portion up to the maximum special tax, which are those numbers? The 10 cents per building square foot is a maximum special tax. So should you not issue as many bonds, you won't need as much money and therefore you would levy less on an annual basis.
And then how long is that good for? So I'm just gonna pick a random number. Let's say we decide this all happens and we decide next spring, well, we're just gonna do 5 million for now. Like, how long is the authorization, I guess, good for if we go through with all of this?
It's good for the term of the CFD.
Okay.
So you could wait, you know, another five years and then issue another set of bonds. So it's pretty flexible.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so here's, here's what we're gonna do on questions, guys. I know we've got some folks watching on YouTube and thank you guys so much for being with us. We've got a number of people who are here with us in the meeting, who are gonna give comments later. So what I'd like to do is take questions from the board first. But while we're doing that, if you guys who are either watching online, I'm looking to my left because I have a screen here with YouTube up on it, but whatever, that's weird. If, if you guys who are watching online have questions, go ahead and type those in the chat. If folks who are in the meeting have questions, type those in the chat. We will read those into the record and make sure we get to them when the board has asked their questions because I really do wanna get a chance to hear from everybody. So if that works for all the board, then we'll keep going with other questions from trustees. But in the meantime, like I said, type those questions in and we'll get to them in just a second. So Jason, I know you had another question. Anybody else? No, okay. Oh, Betsy, go ahead. Oh, Betsy, you're muted.
I thought you said Jason had another question. Should, should I take cuts? Sarah, could you just explain the relationship between, in the, in the, in the operational part of the, of the funding, the relationship between the current parcel tax and the operational part of this, of this measure? How would that, how would they interact or supersede or how, how does that work?
So the library district does have a parcel tax currently that is set to expire in, I believe, two years. And so the idea is that, or four years, sorry. And so the idea is that this, this is available to either close a gap if there's additional funding needed while that parcel tax is still operational. Or it can, or you could choose to not collect the parcel tax and you could collect under the CFD. So it, it would, but it would, it is intended to be a replacement for that once that parcel tax expires on the operational side.
So is another scenario that this measure just wouldn't collect that money for the next four years? The parcel tax would cover our operational expenses? And then once that sun sets, that goes away and the operational part of this set of funding kicks in?
Correct. We, we have the ability with the CFD to set the annual special tax for each component. You know, looking at the facilities requirements, so the debt service on the bonds and administrative requirements and services. So each of those components, we would be looking at on an annual basis. And if you're still collecting the parcel tax and there's no need to collect for services under the CFD, we would not do so.
Thank you. Thanks, Betsy. Terry, did you have a question?
Well, just to clarify what Jason had asked before and what Sarah is explaining, it sounds as if the tax will be variable every year depending upon the library's needs and where we're going. Is that fair? Should Sarah, is that how it would work?
Um, yeah, we, we do look at a budget on an annual basis. It's called the annual special tax requirement. And so we are looking at the funding and financing needs on an annual basis to determine what the levy will be each year. That's actually something that goes back, as the documents are written right now, that's something that goes back to the board on an annual basis for review. So you'll, you'll have visibility and input on that process each year.
Okay.
Betsy, please, go ahead. And, and by extension, we're the ones who decide that. You said it's for our review, but it's really for our approval, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
So I mean, we're the ones who are accountable is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right. And obviously, the, you know, the only limitation is if you issue bonds, you need to levy enough to pay the debt service. And, but the amount of bonds you're issuing is certainly within your power to approve and have input on.
You probably had this in the document, but I missed it. Is there a cap then on what we can raise every year? How much we can, can set the limit, the upper limit?
The limit is the maximum special tax rate. So those rates are what the limit are in terms of what you can charge each parcel on an annual basis. But there is not a total revenue limit in aggregate. So should some of those undeveloped properties become developed, you would have the ability you would have the ability to be able to tax those parcels as developed property and that would increase the amount of revenue you can raise. But you would not be able to charge at any time more than the maximum special tax rate.
Okay, thanks.
So Sarah, is it accurate to say that the maximum special tax rate is kind of equivalent to something like a credit limit, right? We can go up to that point, but never above it. We can always do less than that, should that be sufficient for the library?
Yes.
Great. Other questions from trustees? Okay. Again, I'm happy to take informational questions. We're not going to do comments right now. If you're making a public comment later, you'll have three minutes to cover any ground you'd like to. But if you have an informational question, I'd be happy to ask that at this point. I did have one from one of our attendees in the meeting, which I think is important to cover, which is, why are undeveloped properties that are locally owned not included in the special tax levy?
So there's no restriction on whether undeveloped property is charged or not, but there are a couple of considerations that were reviewed. And those are that one undeveloped property doesn't have people who are using libraries. And so that was one of the considerations. And the other consideration is really around the financing credit. And in order to have a better credit package for investors when the district is ready to issue bonds, having undeveloped property not be levied as part of the special tax, because this is a land secured financing, removing those undeveloped properties strengthens the credit of the bonds that are eventually anticipated to be issued.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I know we also have Mike from Columbia Capital here. If we get into questions about sort of the way issuing bonds works, he's been working with us on some of that as well. So, Mike, I did see you and we may, we may call on your expertise in a little bit. I see a question from YouTube that I'd like to ask and that's, can we make changes to the scope of work? So, for example, we've got stuff that's outlined in the ARG reports. Can we, can we change that? What are the limitations there?
The description of facilities is, has been written fairly broadly. So you are not going to be limited to precisely only what is in that report. If you needed to say, make a change order on the actual construction or something like that, you would have the flexibility to do so. Could you go out and improve a park with the money? No, it is limited to those library facilities. So, but within that context, it's, it's flexible in terms of what specifically you're doing to the library facilities.
And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Sarah, but it's my understanding that we have the ability as a board to also, kind of like Jason was saying earlier, set those priorities and determine that timing, right? So if it turns out, once we start bidding out work, that it makes sense to do multiple things at once or hold off on a project we thought we were going to do, we have the ability to do that and then bond accordingly. Is that correct?
Correct.
Other questions online? I see another one asking if the library has a bond rating now. And we.
The library has what?
A bond rating.
Has the library ever issued bonds?
No.
Then you wouldn't have a bond rating. Each individual bond is going to be rated separately in, in this type of transaction. So, so we would be looking at a separate rating. But if you had issued bonds in the past, you may have, you may or may not have a rated bond anyway.
Yeah, and we have, we have not. All right. Any other? Oh, excuse me. You know what? I just got corrected on the internet, which happens. Apparently, the library did issue bonds in 1967 and they were retired in 1997. Thank you, David. Any other questions?
I have one, Katie.
Yeah, go for it, Teri.
And that is, is there, Sarah, is there any, any oversight by an outside agency, you know, the bond, you know, generators or what have you, on how the money is spent? Other than the inspections that we would get during construction and so on? Is there an agency or a process that monitors how the money is spent?
So not in terms of how the money is spent specifically, but there is reporting that is required to several different agencies. One of them is the state controller. There is annual reporting required to that agency. In addition to that, there are several reports that are required to be provided to the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, or CDAC. So there is reporting to them. They're not looking specifically at, did you spend the money precisely on what you said you were going to spend the money on? They're, they're looking at it from a slightly different perspective as to, did you spend the money within the timeframe that you thought you should, you would spend the money on? And that sort of thing. So there is some oversight and there is reporting required to be made to the public. So there's a Senate Bill 165 has some information, as well as the CFD law itself requires some annual information be made available to the public. So there, there are some checks and balances there in terms of that reporting and the information made available to both the public and those agencies.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah at this point? It doesn't look like anything, so we're going to go ahead and keep moving. But Sarah, if I could ask you to kind of hang around, because I'm sure we will have other things that come up later and I would love to be able to call on your expertise then. Okay? Okay, thank you so much. All right. At this point, I'd like to hand it over to Laura Crati, who is with us today from Clifford Moss. And Laura's going to talk a little bit about some of the outreach and listening that's happened to date and what we have discovered. So Laura, I'll hand it to you.
Good evening, members of the board, staff and community. As President Katie Clark mentioned, I'm Laura Crati with Clifford Moss. We specialize in public engagement and election consulting. And I just want to share with you, the board, staff and community, a summary of some of the listening work and some of the listening findings that's happened over the past recently and then continues to happen. So as a part of this, it was determined important by the board and staff to engage in a deliberate conversation with the community before important decisions were made. So the decision was to inform, educate and listen to the community so that everybody could make informed decisions. And really, a key belief to this, or the belief, is listening to the community is key, which continues to happen tonight and will continue to happen before important decisions are made on Monday, August 4th. The public engagement planning included three tracks. One, district due diligence, research, facilities assessments and providing up-to-date, ongoing information. Two, board engagement to both inform and conduct community listening conversations. And three, stakeholder and opinion leader engagement, which we'll go into in further detail. The public engagement listening included, but certainly was not limited to public opinion research, opinion leader and stakeholder conversations, online two-way communication, including emails, social media and an online survey. So let's go into a little bit of what each of those components in the customized mix showed us. In terms of the opinion leader and stakeholder conversations, dozens happened and they really were throughout the community, representing all different organizations and groups. And this list is not everything. It's just another example of some of the opinion leaders and stakeholder groups that were engaged as part of this conversation. There was also a public opinion research poll conducted that including, included listening to a scientific sample representing the Altadena community. This was conducted with over 600 interviews. And this is available publicly on the previous board meetings. But I will summarize for you. Essentially, the Altadena Library District is viewed positively by many. Many voters see a need for additional funding for the district. And then you can also see that we found, when we broke down the elements from your facilities assessments and your architectural surveys in terms of what your critical needs are, we asked your voters if they agree. You can see the top agreement in the projects, replace leaky roofs, keeping libraries clean, safe and well-maintained, removing hazardous materials and improving access for seniors and people with disabilities. And as you know, as you've heard before, but I'll repeat, to summarize from EMC Research, who conducted the poll, voters value the Altadena libraries and recognize there is a need for more funding. It is impossible to predict future voter mood in these times. However, in the right environment, a CFD measure for the Altadena Library District could be feasible for this November election in 2020. However, they do say that a robust, independently funded campaign effort is strongly recommended to communicate with voters about the need and benefits of a measure. Also, two-way online communication was conducted, including about 25,000 emails from both the library district and to all voters. There was a social media post about the information, as well as the online survey on Facebook, as well as other Facebook accounts, as well as Nextdoor. And you will, you were all a part of that. And there were about 200 responses on the survey and I keep checking it today. It's been up for a while, but it keeps ticking up. So you continue to get people filling out the survey online and sharing their opinion, which I will summarize later in this conversation. So from the responses that we had as of a little earlier today, this was not a scientific survey like the EMC poll, but this was for anyone in the community to respond and share their comments, questions or concerns or, and share their priorities. Do you can see that the top three were provide up-to-date print and online reading materials, keep our libraries clean, safe and well-maintained, and provide important programs and resources to the community? But you cannot compare, I would say, I saw a lot of comments saying that they're all important. And so again, this is not scientific, but just a representation for you and the community to see a summary of those responses. So from all of the listening that was conducted, from the poll, from the opinion leader and stakeholder conversations, from the social media comments to the online survey, here is just a quick summary of what we heard. One, there's great love and pride for Altadena and Altadena libraries. Two, a lot of comments and thoughts about online and COVID-19. Three, there are many priorities of need and many opinions about priorities of need. And then finally, opinions are abundant. So number one, love and pride for Altadena and Altadena libraries. I will just, you can read what's on the screen, but I'll read a few of these. Altadena libraries are the heart of the community. I love the Altadena libraries. I appreciate all the events and resources available to the community, including passport services. This does not include all the comments, but this was a theme that kept bubbling up in all of the listening conversations. A lot about online and COVID-19. Given physical distancing, please provide or expand computer and internet access. Because of viruses, can be airborne and hang around indoors, please optimize airflow. And then please explore technologies such as ultraviolet cleaning. Three, many priorities of need. Please prioritize the needs for the most needy people in our community, including childrens, children, teens and seniors. I think all of the priorities are important. A lot of comments there. ADA is the number one priority. Repairs such as HVAC are number two. Please make sure there are separate spaces for different areas, so there's some quiet spaces. Be aware of load bearing and code issues and give attention to Bob Lucas Branch. And finally, number four, opinions are abundant. This is just some of the opinions that we heard and saw. Really like the Second Saturday Music Events. Be aware of diversity. Listen to the community and facility needs are serious and can't be kicked down the road anymore. So again, that was a brief summary of the listening results to date and I'm happy to pass the baton back to President Clark.
Thanks so much, Laura. So we'll follow the same procedure here, guys. We'll open up the floor for questions from the trustees. We'll also take informational questions from folks who are participating online or in the meeting. So trustees, any questions for Laura about some of the listening she's talked about? Teri, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Laura, there was one line that didn't get read there where it said, go to the ballot at the right time. And I know that's weighed on all of us, the community and the board heavily about when's the right time to do this. Was that a persistent theme or was it just that one comment?
That was not the only comment. It wasn't a persistent theme. I did see that comment more than once, but it wasn't a persistent theme, if that answers your question.
Okay, it does, thank you.
Other questions for Laura? Give everybody online a minute or two to reflect on some of what you've said as well. So Laura, can you just refresh our memory on, you said that there was a difference between the responses in the online survey and the poll? Can you talk about how those two groups were, were different?
Yes. So the poll was a, was a statistical sample that represents the Altadena community. So if you think about different buckets, age groups, demographics, geographies, the poll has to reflect the Altadena community in the percents. And so statistically valid sample of 600 was reached out to for that interview. It was not opt-in. It was exclusive to make sure that it was a representative sample of your community. The online survey that was recently sent out via email and social media, as well as other outlets, is inclusive of anyone who wanted to take that survey. So it was more of an opt-in survey as opposed to the expert polling firm actively seeking out a representative sample of your community.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Other questions for Laura? And similarly, Laura, will you be with us in case something comes up later?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Then I don't see any questions right this minute. And I know we have a number of people who are here to share their opinions with us, so I do want to get to that as quickly as we can. So I think at this point, Laura, I'll say thank you and appreciate you sticking around in case we have some questions in a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, before we get to comments from the public, I'm going to ask Nora O'Brien, our district council, to describe tonight's proceedings in a little bit more legally rigorous way.
Thank you, President Clark. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. So as President Clark mentioned at the beginning, the action tonight is the consolidated public hearing on the formation of the CFD and incurring a bonded indebtedness for the CFD. The consolidated public hearing was called on June 22nd, 2020 and notices of the public hearings were published in the Pasadena Weekly on July 16th, 2020. All is required under the Melrose Act. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to provide oral and written testimony in support of or in opposition to the formation of the CFD and the incurring of a bonded indebtedness of the CFD. Protests against the establishment of the CFD, the extent of the CFD. Protests against the establishment of the CFD, the extent of the CFD, or the furnishing of specified types of facilities or services within the CFD may be made by any interested person. Pursuant to the notices of public hearing that were published, written protests were received up to two hours prior to the hearing. And if you wish to withdraw your written protest, you may do so by calling 626-316-0997 or 626-316-0625 prior to the close of the public hearing. If you would like to provide oral testimony, such oral testimony will not be counted as a protest for purposes of determining whether a majority protest exists, unless you also provide written protest. If prior to the close of tonight's public hearing protests are made by 50% or more of the registered voters within the CFD boundaries, or the owners of 50% or more of the land proposed, within the proposed CFD boundaries, no further proceedings to create the CFD shall be taken for at least one year. If there's a majority protest only submitted with respect to certain types of facilities or services, those facilities or services will be eliminated from the resolution of formation that will be considered at the August 3 meeting. If no majority protest is filed, the board can proceed with forming the CFD and deeming it necessary that a bonded indebtedness of the CFD be incurred at next week's August 3 meeting. So I think that's all the legalese we have for right now.
Thank you, Nora. I appreciate it. That's perfect. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the consolidated public hearing on the formation of the Altadena Library District Community Facilities District, number 2020-1, facilities and services, and the incurring of a bonded indebtedness for such a CFD. Prior to receiving testimony and comments from the public, we do have one piece of business to take care of, which is an amendment to Resolution 2020-05 that was adopted at a previous meeting. And what we need to do tonight is adopt Resolution Number 2020-07, which amends that previous resolution. So the reason we need to do that is because we had a placeholder in there, basically, for what a low-income exemption would look like. And now that we know the rate and method of apportionment that we're looking at, we need to amend that resolution to reflect the rate and method of apportionment in place. So we're going to just amend that previous resolution. And I want to just explain a little bit about what that means. So basically, the way the CFD works is, as Sarah explains, we've got that 10 cent per square foot for assessed properties, and that's on developed properties, single-family homes. Multi-family works a little bit differently, commercial works a little bit differently. One of the things that has been decided in the process of putting this together by the board is that we wanted to make sure that there was a low-income exemption in there. And LA County has a number of different income tiers. They have like an extremely low one, a very low one, a low-income one. And we thought, you know, given all of the many complications that are happening in people's lives this year and are honestly likely to continue into the future, we wanted to make sure that that was part of this. So that low-income exemption is pegged to an LA County rate. All that information is available as part of the rate and method of apportionment, but what we need to do now tonight is just amend it to reflect the accurate number. And so that's been provided in the resolution. So before we get to public comment, we're going to do that. So are there, before we do that though, from the board, are there any questions on this resolution? Okay, like I said, it's pretty much a structural thing. Again, all of this is putting in place everything that we need to do so that we can make a decision next Monday. It is a complicated process, I will say, having gone through it now for the first time. So lots of preparation to make sure that we're at the point where we can make a decision one way or another next week. So at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-07 as it appears in your board package.
I move that we...
Terry, go ahead.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2020-7 as specified.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made. Seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion or commentary on this before we proceed to a vote? Okay, hearing done. We'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me, so that resolution is unanimously adopted. Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. So this is the moment we've all been waiting for. So at this time, I'd like to welcome and thank seriously from all of us, the members of the public who are here tonight. So we have some people who are going to give us some comments live, on air, and then we've got some comments that have been submitted in writing ahead of time. So here's what we're going to do. We've got an order of hearing, so I'm just going to read that out so everybody knows when they're going. For everybody who's giving a verbal comment, so everybody who's going to talk with us live, we're going to have a three-minute limit. You do not have to use the whole three minutes, but you're welcome to, right? And so everybody who's got a written comment submitted will read it into the record, and Nikki is also going to share her screen while she's doing that, so you can see it on the screen as well. So our order of statements that we received will be this. First, we'll have Bridget Brewster, followed by Dr. Sandra Thomas, a written comment from David, a written comment from Sharon Sand, a verbal comment from Marnie Brown, verbal comment from Gail Meltzer, verbal comment from David Datz, a written comment from Joyce Strayer, a verbal comment from Elliot Gold, a verbal comment from Veronica Jones, and a verbal comment from Victoria Knapp. Before I proceed, I'm just going to check, Nikki, has anything else come in since we've started or that I should be aware of for that list?
Nope. The person that arrived at the library was the original written comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we do have them on there. Okay, perfect. That's really good. Excellent. Okay, very good. So at this point, I will ask Bridget to go ahead and turn on your video and your audio, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm not going to go into details about why we need to do this. I think it's clear from everyone that the needs are great for our library, and I think everyone wants to see that addressed. But I do know that several people have concerns about November. Can we do this? Can we really reach the community in the seemingly short span time? And I'm going to leave the whole number crunching and accounting regarding the cost of a special election or the inevitable rise in labor and material costs if we kick it down the road a little further. I do a little better if I speak from my heart, and sometimes I even let my head guide that. I do think we're all sort of tired. I think a little discouraged, maybe even pessimistic, and certainly looking for a silver lining somewhere over the rainbow. And that's why I'm thinking November may be the perfect moment for some positive call to action. We all want a reason to hope. We want just some, some tiny bit of control over our lives and some hint that we really can make a difference, not only in our community and the world. Well, what better way than to be part of a movement that will guarantee your vote and my vote is going to change Altadena. It's our community. We have the opportunity during a very discouraging time, regardless of any other political outcomes, to step up and know that this vote will mean that our tax dollars are going to be raised here in Altadena, and it will be spent specifically for the Altadena library. One, a library that has become the heart of this community. Now, I can't be certain about everybody else's attitude. I don't know about what your mood is. I don't know what your desire is when you wake up on November 4. I want to be able to wake up and smile on November 4, regardless of who is elected to what office. I want to know that I have done my part to ensure that the children, the seniors, the teens, the people who live and work in Altadena are going to be taken care of. And I can say without reservation, I'm ready to take action right now.
I'm so sorry. I'm going to have to cut you off.
It's fine.
That's three minutes that I want to be as there...
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have a verbal comment from Dr. Sandra Thomas. Dr. Thomas, do you want to turn on your video and your audio? Perfect. Looks like you're still muted. There we go. Fabulous.
Is that a little bit better?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so now that might help a little bit. Good evening, everyone. To our distinguished Board of Trustees and to all gathered on this teleconference this evening. I'm Sandra Thomas, and I've lived in Altadena a little while, about 45 years. And I currently sit on the Altadena Town Council, and I represent Census Track 460302. And that's the Census Track where the Bob Lucas Library is located. So I just want to say, I totally support, as Bridget just so eloquently stated, I totally support this bond measure being on the November ballot. CFD Number 2020-1 for the record, so my support would be there. Our libraries need the funding so that they will be able to function the way that they should and the way that they want to. Now, they've both done quite well with what they've had, but they need the money. They need more money so that their financing will be sustainable. And the bond measure would make them sustainable for a few years. So I've looked and I've watched the slides again, reviewing them. But I'm certainly in favor of the bond measure going on the November ballot. So with that said, I don't really need to take up any more time. I just hope that everyone in our community will see it that way and will support this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thomas. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next public comment is from David. This is a written comment that was submitted, and David requested that we read this into the record. So Nikki, I'm going to ask you to read that into the record, if you would, please.
Can you guys see it? Okay. So this is from David, from the community. "Technology is everywhere, yet I was too poor to afford as much. Instead, I used what the library had to offer with appreciation. I fulfilled my dream of earning a college degree in which I'm indebted. I urge our citizens and members to understand how crucial these programs are for development, not only for those like myself, but the community as a whole." Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to David for submitting that comment. Is Sharon, Nikki, did Sharon want us to read her comment into the record? Did she want to make it? Sharon, it looks like you're here with us. Which would you prefer? We can do either.
She had messaged me to read it for her.
Okay, perfect. Let's do it. Let's read it into the record.
Okay, so I'll share again. Here we go. So as you mentioned, from Sharon Sand. "As Chair of Altadena Heritage, I write in support of protecting and preserving the architectural gem we have in the Boyd-Georgie Design Mid-Century Modern Library. Altadena Heritage has long supported efforts to protect the character of the original architecture, interior, and furnishings of the library. It is clear that funding is needed to do this while also protecting and enhancing the vital services and resources the library provides for our community. As a private citizen, I'm strongly in favor of implementing a long-term solution to ensuring that our Altadena libraries continue to serve our community."
Thank you so much for that, Sharon. We really appreciate your comment. At this point, our next comment is from Marnie Brown, and that's a verbal comment. So Marnie, if you'd like to turn on your video and audio, we'd love to hear your thoughts.
Hi, I just want, I'm Marnie Brown. I'm a resident of Altadena. I grew up there. I still live there. I want to say that I really do believe that the Altadena library is necessary. The technology we give to students now, the support we can give to the students in the coming years is very important. And as a person who is aging in Altadena, I understand the need for more ADA adjustments, and I think that's really important, that we get the money that we need to make those accommodations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Marnie. We appreciate your comment. Okay, next we have Gail Meltzer. Gail, if you'd like to, oh, you're ready to go. On the button. All right, Gail, whenever you're ready.
We are at a crossroads. Excuse me, I want to set my timer so I know how I'm doing. We are at a crossroads in so many ways as a nation and within our small but mighty community of Altadena. We have critical decisions to make about the values that guide our actions and define who we are. My hope is that together we will decide that everyone in our beautiful Altadena, no matter their economic status, is deserving of libraries that are truly reflective of how deeply we value each other. Our library buildings need significant and costly repairs and upgrades that can and should no longer be deferred. How is it possible that our buildings still need to be brought into compliance regarding access and safety? It's simply unacceptable. And of course, in the past few years, we have begun to see how exciting and fun programming and events can bring our community together as never before. We have all the proof that we need that investment in these areas brings enormous returns. What a blessing that we live in such a diverse community where our lives are so enriched by being with each other and by enjoying life together. Let's agree that we are worthy to learn, grow, and thrive together and embrace this timely opportunity to secure and invest in the capital that is and invest the capital that is needed. And I wanted to end by thanking you, thanking you, the trustees, for your thoughtful service to our libraries and our district.
Thank you so much, Gail. We appreciate your thoughts. All right, our next comment is also a verbal comment from David Datz. So David, if you'd like to turn on your video and audio, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. I want to start by complimenting the board. I think you're a great group, and you have done all the right things in this, and you've hired very good consultants, and I can see that. You've done the outreach and the polling and everything else that was detailed for us. I am in favor of this provision in principle. What scares me is the timing. And I can tell you that, from prior experience as a trustee, that when word of this gets out more to the general public, you will get pushback. You will get a lot of angry people who will claim falsely that they were not informed, no chance to be informed, and they will look you in the face and they will say that, even though you know better. I know it happened to us when I was on the board. And I'm worried that you're not leaving yourselves enough time. And I'm worried that you, you're not leaving yourselves enough time to react to that, remembering that in order to lose, the no votes have to be thirty-three percent plus one vote. And it's very easy to lose that. If you do, you're looking at coming back again. I would have to say that in order to minimize the risk, I would favor doing this in 2022, even though interest rates may be higher and construction costs may be higher. I think a special election is a bad idea, but there are anti-tax people in Altadena, and, and this will be a potential increase for many homeowners. And, and, and as I say, people will complain that they weren't informed. Some of them may be willfully uninformed because they haven't looked at the materials that were available to them. That will happen a lot. So I'll just end this by saying, you're doing a great job. I'm in favor of the measure. I think you're handling it beautifully, except you're not leaving yourselves enough time before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your thoughts, David. We appreciate you being with us, and thank you, of course, for your many years of service to our district. Our next comment is a written comment from Joyce Strayer. So Nikki, I'm going to ask you to read that into the record for us, please.
Okay, so as Katie mentioned, this is from Joyce Strayer, resident of Altadena for thirty-two years. She said, "Let's do this together. Our libraries need our help, and we need our libraries, now more than ever. Public libraries are the most egalitarian institutions we have. They are open to and exist for all of us, regardless of race, nationality, religion, or wealth. Where else can everyone go for information, assistance, educational programs, encouragement, exposure to the arts, access to technology, and the wonderful world of books? Our libraries are institutions for all ages, from children enjoying teddy bear time to seniors looking for new adventures after retirement. We are privileged to have an architectural treasure in our main library, a treasure that has needed mending and amending for a long time. This building is not only the most interesting and unique building in Altadena, it, along with the Bob Lucas branch, is the heart of our community. The libraries are ours, and we need to take care of them. We do not know when or if life will again return to normal, whatever "normal" may mean. But we do know that the need for a place that welcomes everyone and provides the resources needed to work for self-improvement and a better future will be even more essential. What we are asked to do is small by comparison to the benefits to be gained: safe buildings, accessible to everyone, and continuation of critical and vital resources. Altidinos should rise up and do whatever is needed to preserve our treasures."
Thank you so much, and thank you to Joy for submitting that comment. Next, we have Elliot Gold. Elliot, if you'd like to turn on your audio and video, we'd love to hear from you.
There we go. You can hear me. I take it?
We can.
All right. I submitted this as a chat, but let me repeat it, and that is that my following statement is as follows. No question that the funds would be raised for important and critical work on the libraries, and that you will be sure to explain that to the public. But, and Shirley always says, and I always say, it's my big but. You're supposed to laugh, by the way. That's all right. Considering the current COVID crisis and the fact that many are at home struggling, you should think hard about having a bond measure on the ballot which would raise taxes this year. End of comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. We appreciate it. Okay, our next comment is from Veronica Jones. That's a verbal comment. So Veronica, if you'd like to turn on your video and audio, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, everybody. Hi, and I want to just thank all those involved in this. It's exciting. And I understand about the cost and the timing and all that, but I also understand that Bob Lucas has been, been behind the times. It's been just not on equal footing for as long as it's been there. And I think there's no better time than now to bring it up to equal footing. The library ensures that knowledge and technology are available to everyone, and this means that our entire community receives the benefit of a better, better educate, better educated community. And with Bob Lucas the way it is now, there's no way. It serves so many people. So many kids depend on that library. If we wait, costs just go up, things just get worse. If we don't pay now in the form of a special tax, we pay in other ways. So you're gonna pay. It's not a matter of, of how much or when. It's, it's going to be now. You're going to pay. The people sitting at home that are suffering for COVID are also suffering for not having a library that they can access. It breaks my heart to hear a mother say, "I have to think twice about taking my child to the library because I have to lift the wheelchair." I just don't think those things are fair. They should, it should have never gone this far, and I think now is the time to stop it and to make sure that things become equal and that our community becomes the best that it can be, and we be the best neighbors we can be by voting yes on this. And I am not rich. I don't have a lot of money, but I know the extra hundred dollars a year is not going to break me or make me any richer if I keep it. So I ask you, please, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Veronica. We really appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Our next comment is from Victoria Knapp. Hi, Victoria.
Hello.
Whenever you're ready.
I am ready. Good evening, library trustees, library staff, and fellow Altidinos. I'm Victoria Knapp, and I'm speaking as a ten-year Altadena resident, mother of two school-aged children, niece of a retired Sierra Madre library employee, and fervent Altadena Library District supporter. I know these are difficult and uncertain times. I also know that we will come out of this pandemic a more unified Altadena because Altidinos care. I care about our town, and I care about the future of our library district, which I consider to be a community hub, resource, and partner. We have long known that our libraries are in need of repair in order to stand the test of time, and that we specifically need to bring them into the 21st century where ADA access is concerned and where the very buildings we all spend so much time are in need of structural improvements. Further, there are many programs our libraries provide to the community which will need to expand as we define our new post-pandemic normal, and the need to bring these programs out of our libraries and to our residents will be key. While I am generally fiscally conservative, I am also a realist, and I know that the only way we are going to provide for our library, libraries, is through raising capital to fund these improvements and provide for our library district for decades to come. There is no better time to consider this than during a presidential election, and this particular election, and this moment in our history. This is the one thing we as Altidinos can do that will have an impact in and for Altadena. We need our libraries to grow and meet the demands of our population, and that means everyone. Those are those who are able-bodied and physically disabled, sighted and blind, young and aging, English speakers and English language learners, all who benefit from the many programs our libraries are called upon to provide. We have come through a great storm with this Board of Trustees and its new library director, and I'd like us to come together in a tangible financial way to preserve and grow in ways so many rely upon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Victoria. We really appreciate you being with us and sharing your thoughts. And thank you to everybody who submitted a comment, everybody who's watching online, and as well as the hundreds of people who filled out the survey, who took part in our conversations, who answered a phone call and a pollster and responded with their opinions. We really appreciate all of your input, and we take it very seriously. So thank you for sharing that with us. I want to ask, at this time, Nikki, are there any other comments that have come in that we, that we would like to hear at this point? I know we had a protocol for people to submit them, so I want to make sure we've heard from absolutely everybody.
I haven't received any emails. Natalia, can you confirm that you haven't either?
I have not received any either.
Okay, and there's nothing else on YouTube that I've seen?
Okay. Well, certainly, as everybody has heard, we're not making any game time decisions tonight. That's going to happen next Monday. So if anybody does have a comment that they'd like to submit or some thoughts that they'd like to share, we would love to hear those, and we certainly will be on the lookout for those between now and next Monday. But at this point, I believe we've heard all the public comments that have been submitted. And again, my thanks to everybody who was with us tonight in person, virtually, and who submitted those ahead of time. Seeing that no other members of the public at this point would like to provide oral testimony, I am prepared to close the public hearing. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I now close this consolidated, or I read my script wrong, sorry. Hearing none, I now declare this consolidated public hearing closed. Board Secretary Kapel, can you please provide the protest count? So did any protests come in?
Unless there's been last-minute ones, none have come in within the two-hour window that BBNK spoke of. So we've received zero protests, and no majority protest has been received.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this point, I'm going to declare our public hearing closed, and we'll return to our regular agenda. Again, my sincere thanks to everybody who commented and shared their thoughts with us. We really do appreciate hearing from you, and I know that myself and all of my colleagues on the board take that very seriously. At this point, I'd like to return to some of our previously agendized business. I'd like to hear our support group reports. So I'd like to ask, looking back at my agenda decision from this first. Let's, oh, it's the foundation. Okay, so Bridgette, if you'd like to give us a quick report from the Altadena Library Foundation.
Quick report. That was clever. Subtle, subtle. The Altadena Library Foundation is an exciting juncture, building on a very strong bedrock set in place by the many people who established and grew the foundation. And now we're crossing a bridge that has been created by those who followed. The current efforts of the trustees to pursue a bond measure is a serious one, and we have recognized as a foundation board, it is our call to action. In the past couple months, we have taken a few steps to cross the bridge. We've done a complete document review under the guidance of Gail Melzer, CFRE. We have also discussed at our last meeting, can we, will we be willing to fund the campaign or some substantial amount of the campaign as we go forward to introduce this ballot measure to the public? And our vote was a unanimous yes, and we will do everything we can to support the library financially as well as to help raise funds. Additionally, Taste of Dina. And the best of times, events are time-consuming, so we are going to create Taste of Dina as a virtual event, and we're reassessing the expense of our vision, and our focus now is going to be twofold. We're going to be talking about what's going on as well as raising funds for the mobile library unit, if at all possible. And we also hosted a Zoom appreciation dinner for past board members, and it was very successful, and 100% of our honorees were able to attend, and it was a wonderful evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Bridgette, and thank you to the foundation and the entire foundation Board of Directors for everything they do to support the library now and certainly moving forward.
For sure.
I'd like to hand it over now to Marnie for a report from the Friends.
Hi again. So the Friends don't usually have a summer meeting in July, but we did have our book pitch party yesterday. We had several participants. It was a lovely two-hour afternoon meeting or event. That's an unofficial meeting. We just chatted about books, and we awarded a lifetime membership in the Friends to Polly Dutton, the former child librarian, former district, what was it? She was a librarian, interim librarian. She's a member. She'd been around for thirty years. She'd been at the library, employed by the library for over thirty years. So, and a valued member of the Friends and a big contributor to Friends activities. So we awarded Polly a lifetime membership in the Friends yesterday. And we will, of course, as a group, get together after your next meeting on Monday, after whatever decision you decide. If you decide to go forward with the bond initially with the CFD, the Friends will get together to discuss it, a board meeting, and to see what we can do to support the library and its endeavor. I know several members of the Friends either contributed statements or spoke today, so I do believe it's something that we will be able to support, both financially and in whatever way we can in a virtual election. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marnie, and again, please pass all of our warm wishes and our deep thanks to the Friends for everything that they continue to do as well. We do, we really appreciate them, and we miss them.
We miss being there.
All right, so that brings us to item six on our agenda, new business. And Nikki, do you want to talk a little bit about this item? This is an information-only item that appears on pages thirty-eight and forty of your agenda package.
Yep, thank you, Katie. Good evening, board members. So again, this is just an informational item, and if you look back at the master calendar that you approved basically ten days ago on July 16th, in July, we get the notice of election every two years. So I received an email actually on July 22nd with the notice of election, which is attached in your package, stating that, you know, we have the vacancies and we'll be going forward with the election. And the filing period, again, being from Monday, July 13th, we're right in the middle of it, closing on Friday, August 7th. The Election Coordination Unit has prepared a candidate handbook and resource guide for those that are interested in running, which can be found at www.lavote.net. So again, this is just an informational item that is part of our master calendar. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Nikki? Nikki, I'll just note on the agenda that there's a typo, and it says July 16th, 2018, and August 10th, 2018 is the first and last day. That should say 2020, correct?
Is that on the, oh, at the first page?
And, yeah, on the actual agenda, not the item.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was cut and pasted. We'll get that fixed.
Okay, perfect. Just when we, when we approve the minutes, we'll want to make sure that appears correctly.
Yep, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you to David, who mentioned it. Thank you, David. Any questions for Nikki on this? An information item. I will mention, since we have people watching online, there's time. You can file to run, and you can find all the information. This is a PSA moment. You can find all the information you need on the Altadena Library website, including a fun walkthrough how to file those papers that Jason and I did. I say fun because filing your election paperwork is fun, and you should do it. But we, we're trying to get resources out to everybody. Obviously, running for office is a big decision, and it involves a lot of work, but if there are any things that we can do to help make that easier for people to undertake, we certainly know that the more people who participate, the better it is for the library and the better it is for Altadena, so.
Yeah, I'd like to publicly thank the two of you for such an informative workshop for anyone interested in running for office. And again, on our website, it's altadinalibrary.org/boardelection, where you can find the link to that video, as well as all the other resources for people that for people that are tempted to run.
Perfect, thank you. And so you have until August 7th, right? Okay, perfect. All right, so that brings us to item seven, announcements and planning. There's no correspondence that I'm aware of this month. In terms of proposed future agenda items, as I said, we will be having our special meeting on Monday, August, Monday, August 3rd. I'm just double-checking the date, right? The 3rd on Monday? Yes, Monday, August 3rd at 5:00 PM. And that's the moment where we will look at a number of resolutions and have the discussion about if and how and when we want to move forward on all of these, all of these items that we've heard feedback and information on tonight. Are there other proposed agenda items that anybody would like to add to that or our next regular meeting, which would be August 24th?
Katie, I don't know if this is appropriate to put on the next meeting, but that's the one where we'll be voting about whether or not to go forward with the bond in November, right?
Yep, that's right.
I think that a couple of things that would be very helpful. I think staff could prepare a report on this, to the extent that anybody else, any other entities in our area are placing bonds and they've announced that on the ballot. I'd sure like to know about that, you know, the details of what PUSD is doing, what Pasadena City College is doing. You know, just try to get a sense of how many folks are going to be putting forward bond measures for tax. I know we don't, we won't know that for sure until after everybody's reported that. But if there's any information out there now, early, about people that are, I'd love to know that and a little report on the action that's going on. And the second thing would be to know a little bit more, and I don't know how to phrase this, but it's a request, about how we, as a library, would promote this in November. You know, what would the steps be? What would the organization look like? What would the timeline be like, et cetera? What do we hope to accomplish between now and Election Day? Something that gives a little bit more structure to what we are trying to do. And, you know, I mentioned this several times, I'm totally, like everybody else, in favor of going forward with this bond measure. We have to. But the timing is what troubles me a little bit. So knowing what we're, what kind of atmosphere, what kind of environment we're stepping into in terms of tax issues, I'd really like to know more about that. So it's a very vague request, but if staff could put something together about that, I sure would appreciate it.
Absolutely, Terry. And I think between staff and the Public Funding Committee and some of our consultants, I think we have all that information, so we can definitely figure out how to put it together.
Okay, good.
Great. Yeah, yeah, we can make that happen. That's a great, that's a great question. Other requests, we're taking requests. It's agenda. I'll request now. Now? Okay. Well, then that brings us to the end of the agenda for this evening. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody who was with us, both on YouTube and in the meeting, everybody who submitted written comments and shared their thoughts with us in person. We really do appreciate hearing from you, and I know all of us are going to think a lot about what we've heard tonight as we move into some of the decision points that we have coming next week. So for all of our trustees, we'll see you next Friday, next Monday, at the same time, at 5:00 PM for our special meeting. We'll get that package out as soon as we can, certainly by no later than Friday, but hopefully we'll have it to you much sooner than that. And unless there are any other items, at this point, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn.
Okay. I read Terry's lips, and he said that he seconded it, but can you say?
You're a good lip reader. I second that, yes.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any objection? Okay, hearing none, then I declare this meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM. Thanks so much, guys. Really appreciate it.
Everybody, yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
So much. Thanks, everybody who's watching on YouTube.